Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Millville's special town meeting for April the 30th, 2018. First of all, let's all stand and pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. We're going to have a moment of silent prayer for all our military members, both serving overseas in endangered areas and here at home, and also for our first responders. Please have a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. You may be seated. When I came in tonight, had a young lady tell me less. Keep your remarks short, please. Folks, we have 214 registered voters here tonight, not counting our observers, okay? And I'm going to go over a few things. Over the last month or so, I have been aware of the social media and comments made on social media, both good and bad, and sometimes it really irritates me to see how we respond to our fellow citizens when they express their opinions. I would like to say it is my desire to ensure that we cover all of the articles within the warrant in a very respectful and timely manner, but also in a very courteous manner. Each of the registered voting members of this community has an opinion or thoughts that they have the right to express those opinions or thoughts without fear of interruption or harassment. You may not agree with a person, and that's fine, that's okay. You also have the right to express your thoughts or opinions at the proper time. If you don't agree or like what a person is saying, please just keep quiet and listen, and then take your turn on the floor. I will not allow any name-calling, harassment, or derogatory remarks being directed towards anyone attending this meeting. If you interrupt, and I tell you to stop, and you do it again, I will have you removed from this meeting, and you will be placed somewhere within the building until this meeting is over with. We have come together in a civil assembly as a community, in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I'm right" and saying "I believe I'm right," and that our enablers with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. Let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is a far greater importance than any differences we may have. For your information, the following excerpts are taken from Massachusetts General Law and the town bylaws. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 16, and I quote, "The moderator shall preside and regulate proceedings, decide all questions of order, and make public declarations of all votes." Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 17, and I quote, "No person shall address the town meeting without leave of the moderator, and all persons at the request of the moderator be silent. If a person, after warning from the moderator, persists in disorderly behavior, the moderator may order him to withdraw from the meeting, and if he does not withdraw, may order a constable or any other person to remove him and confine him in some convenient place until the meeting is adjourned." Millville Town Bylaws, Chapter 30, dash 3, Subparagraph K, and I quote, "The moderator may conduct all votes requiring two-thirds majority by statute in the same manner in which the moderator conducts the votes when a majority vote is required." Once a motion has been moved and seconded, we will enter the discussion phase. I may ask all individuals who have something to speak or questions to ask to please come down to the microphones and line up one behind the other. One microphone is located right here. I will then recognize each of you in order. Please state your name and give your address, and make, state your name clearly and your address clearly, because our town clerk records each one of those for each speaker. I feel the need to explain that we are here to discuss and vote on each of the articles and only the articles within the warrant. For example, Article 1, Convey Real Property, Farmer Town Hall. We are here to decide whether or not to turn over the town hall to the Board of Selectmen, not how much they will sell it for, who can buy it, what is going to be used for, et cetera, and et cetera, and et cetera. Article 3, Supplemental Funding Override. We are here to discuss and vote on whether to put the two-and-a-half override on the town ballot. We are not here to discuss the town's upcoming budget, therefore be advised that I will not allow discussion on anything outside the warrant article that is being presented. If a speaker's comment or discussion starts to go outside the scope of the article, I will stop the discussion or comments. We do this so the town clerk can keep accurate records as to the proceedings. In order to be recognized, all you need to do is raise your hand and shout out, Mr. Moderator. Once I have recognized you, you need to come down to one of the microphones, state your name, and give your address. Keep your remarks brief. I will allow approximately three minutes to speak. Once you have spoken, please retake your seat. I will not allow a person to speak for the second time on the same subject matter until all other individuals have had a turn to speak. I want to have at this time the introduction of the town clerk, Mrs. Diane Lockwood. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Joe Reposo, and will you introduce your board, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. To my immediate right is Town Council Brian Mazur. To my right is Jennifer Callahan, Town Administrator. To my left is Jennifer Dean Wing. To her left is Thomas Hool. To his left is Erica Blake, and to her left is Andrew Oward.
You're trying to steal my thunder. I was going to introduce these two. You always do that, don't you? He can't follow instructions either. Chairman of the Board of Finance, Paul Olet. You introduce your committee, please.
Yes, I'm Paul Olet. This is Mike Foster, Brian Pacheco, Mike Dachecco, and our newest member, Aubrey Buono.
I'd like to also congratulate the, on the election of Erica Blake to the Board of Selectmen, she came off of that side of the stage and moved to this side, okay? I'm going to introduce a couple more people. Mr. Brian Riley, who is with Copeland Page, and they are our town councils. Tonight with us, we have representative from our district, our state rep, Kevin Curis. Please stand. Thank you. We also have with us a candidate for the State Senate, Tom Morelli. We have Tom Malone, candidate for state rep. And we have Kevin Tagleiferia, for candidate for state rep, okay? Does anyone have any questions about the meeting rules or procedures? Come on down here.
Norman Thewitt, 25 Ironstone Street. Mr. Moderator, would you or the town council please advise the voters as to the one-hour reconsideration rule on any vote? Thank you.
Be glad to, sir. Town Bylaws, Chapter 30, Section 3, Procedures, Subparagraph K, no, excuse me, G, Reconsideration. No vote shall be reconsidered at the same meeting or at any adjournment thereof except within one hour of the adoption of such vote, and then only upon a two-thirds vote of voters present and voting. Anybody not understand that? Okay? So, we take a vote. You have one hour to make a motion to reconsider that vote, okay? Once it goes past that one hour, it's gone. Any other questions? Okay, folks, tighten your seat belts, and let's get started. Article 1, Convey Real Property, dash Farmer Town Hall, to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of one or more parcels of town-owned property within the Longfellow Municipal Center, being the land and building thereon formerly known and used as Town Hall, more particularly described as a portion of Assessors' Map 123, Partial 134, from the board or officer currently having such care, custody, management, and control thereof for the purpose for which said parcels are currently held, to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of disposition by sale, lease, or otherwise, and further to authorize the, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, I did sit there, didn't I? Okay. Portion of said land, together with all, with any and all buildings and improvements thereon owned by the town, any such disposition to be on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may deem necessary or appropriate in the best interest of the town, which may include the reservation of easements and restrictions, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate, enter into, and execute any and all documents or agreements as may be necessary and appropriate, therefore, or to act in any manner related thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of one or more parcels of town-owned property within the Longfellow Municipal Center, being the land and building therefore formerly known and used as Town Hall, more particularly described as a portion of Assessors' Map 123, Parcel 134, from the board or officer currently having such care, custody, management, and control for the purpose for which said parcels are currently held, to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of disposition by sale, lease, or otherwise, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, convey, transfer, or lease all of the portion of said land, together with any and all buildings and improvements thereon owned by the town. Any such deposition to be on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen has deemed necessary or appropriate in the best interest of the town, which may include the reservation of easements and restrictions, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate, enter into, and execute any and all documents or agreements as may be necessary and appropriate, therefore.
Is there a second?
I second.
Mrs. Wing made the motion, and Mrs. Blake seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Anybody wants to speak on this matter, raise your hand. If not, or come up to the air. Yes, sir. Come up to the microphone, please. State your name fully and your address. And when he's going to the mic, going on, Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, please pull those mics right up to your mouth, because if you don't, we can't hear you.
Bridget Stearman, 28 Boulder Court. I only have a quick question, and that is, does this parcel of land that we're going to be giving control up to the Board of Selectmen, does that include the playground and the police station, or is it just going to be for the Town Hall, well, the former Town Hall?
The town administrator is going to answer that.
Thank you. I cannot see you because of the podium, but I thank you for your question. There you are. Hi. The actual parcel is one entity, even though in the past it had been distinctly divided prior to the Board of Selectmen actually assuming control for a different purpose, before it was a school, and then it was the original Town Hall that we recently left. And so, the actual parcel itself includes the parking lot behind, it does include the police station, so part of what we have to do is sort that out. We're not looking to make changes to our police department and our playground, and also the park, that's a historic park in front. It's really the building that we're more concerned with, and the disposition of the building and the parking lot. Right now, by our actual assessor maps, it puts it all together, but that's one of the things that we need to do, and, you know, the Board of Selectmen is the chief executive officer, and typically does do agreements, contracts, leases, and negotiations. So, they did this before, when it became a Town Hall, we're just asking to continue that actual power of authority, but with geared towards a different purpose going forward. It's no longer going to be a Town Hall. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Yes, ma'am?
Elaine Ethia, Nine Tower Road. I'd like to know if the Udo Tower is considered part of that same deed as the municipal building? I understand it's a different deed, and that's part of the history of Millville. Thank you.
I know that in the individual discussions I've had with board members and also the Finance Committee when we discussed this article, we have no intentions of wanting to do anything to give up the historic parameters of the property. So, we know, and I've had discussions with people like Margaret Carroll as well, and everybody knows Margaret and the Historic Commission, that that would not be one of the goals here. It really is the building and the parking lot. And that will be something that will go through a number of iterations publicly, so when we make those steps, you will hear about that, you will see that, but right now, I would unequivocally say that that is not a goal of the Board of Selectmen, it certainly isn't as a town administrator, and we want to keep those assets that we have, and it purely is the building and the parking lot, that relation thereto.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. I'm declaring it as a two-thirds vote. Before I go any further, one thing I forgot to do in the res, everybody, turn your cellphones to mute, please. I don't want any cellphones going off. Okay? And I would like to request that you not use your cellphone during this meeting. Mine is up here, and the reason I have it up here is on there I have an app which I can use as a timer, so when you start getting long-winded, keep me on track, keep you on track. And the other thing is, I thought our town administrator couldn't see this man because she was going to say that fat man in front of me was balking my view. Article 2. Oh, boy. Medical Marijuana and Marijuana Establishments Bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to add a new medical marijuana and marijuana establishments bylaw as follows. Folks, that bylaw is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and one-third page is long. All of you picked up a copy of the warrant articles. Does anybody not have a copy of the warrant articles they picked up from the back table? I have two over here. Anybody else? Okay. Is there anyone here who came with husband and wife, or friend, and whatever, and you could share one together and give these other people a copy? These people have been taken care of over here. Who else over here doesn't have one? Anybody else doesn't have a copy of the warrant articles to read or share, side by side? I'm going to give you a few minutes to read through that article in all seven and one-third pages. I am not reading that whole thing. Also, in your packet, there is a pink, a pink sheet of paper that you picked up in the back. I hope there was enough. And it's a synopsis of the proposed marijuana bylaw, okay? You can also read that. It gives you a brief description of it. Oh, gentlemen, take your hats off, please. I forgot to do that at the beginning, too. Everybody knows I don't allow men to wear hats inside the house in that town meeting. And if you're wearing a hat, that means you haven't been to this town meeting in a while. A young lady here is passing out those pink sheets if somebody didn't have one or an article. There's somebody over here who needs one. Isn't there someone else who needs one over here on the middle? You need one? Got one? All right. Anybody else need one of these pink sheets? Or an article? Let's keep it down. Come on, keep it down. Has anybody not had time to look through the article? Everybody has had time to review the article or the pink sheet, okay? John Hadley, where are you? You better come down here. You knew you were going to have to come down here. Why'd you park way out in the back? I know, he needs his exercise. John, you want to make the motion?
Yes, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by revising existing text in Section 100 dash 104 definitions and Section 100 and 302 Schedule of Use Regulations, and by deleting Section 100 dash 303 Temporary Moratorium on Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers and adopting a new section, 100 dash 303 Medical Marijuana and Marijuana Establishments, all as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Put it right up to your mouth, and say it again, John.
All right. Can you hear me now? Okay.
If you can, turn his mic up a little bit.
I think that does it. Okay. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by revising existing text in Section 100 dash 104 definitions and Section 100 dash 302 Schedule of Use Regulations, and by deleting Section 100 dash 303 Temporary Moratorium on Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers and adopting a new section, 100 dash 303 Medical Marijuana and Marijuana Establishments, all as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Who's second it is? Raise your hand. What's your name? It's Jackie Lima. Okay, John. You done your part. You want to give a brief synopsis on that?
I could just briefly.
All right, go ahead and briefly go over it.
Last year, the state of Massachusetts voted.
Get close to the microphone.
Legalized marijuana, and the town of Millville voted in favor of it. And for that reason, the planning board has come up with rules and regulations governing marijuana, and we've, just to protect the town, and in this case, if everyone got one of these copies, it shows that the outlying residential, village residential, village senate district, it's all known, those areas, and it's special permit in the commercial business area, which means anyone that comes in for a permit will have to come before the planning board, explain what they want to do, and before anything else would happen, we'd have a meeting on a special permit, so the voters of the town could come and voice their opinion on this. We've covered just about everything in here to protect the town. That's the reason it's so lengthy, and that covers just about all of it.
Any questions or concerns? Mr. Lincoln Barber, come on down, sir. Which curtain do you want?
One or two microphones.
Because I wanted you to get up and walk all the way across the room.
Lincoln Barber, 226 Thayer Street. Having read this while, I waited for the hall to fill. I didn't I didn't see a whole lot in there about who is charged, what position or what board or whatever for enforcing the vast majority of the rules and regulations outlined in this bylaw. Can you fill us in on that, please?
I'm gonna ask the town members, can you answer that question for him?
I believe so. There will be further regulations that do get drafted, especially as both the town planner and the planning board embark on creating the parameters of which they would consider any applicant in the future. But because it's a zoning bylaw, you know, technically speaking, the enforcement capability will lie with our chief zoning enforcement officer, which I know you've... For those of you who don't know, Lincoln Barber is our chief enforcement officer as a building commissioner. Which raises actually a really good question as we go forward in people's roles. And this is something that the town has to consider. But we also have a lot of details that will unfold in terms of also legal enforcement. And that will be something in which our chief of police will weigh very heavily as any applicant that comes forward. And, you know, the entire notion of any kind of business that is a marijuana establishment will go through a rigorous, a very rigorous evaluation by our public safety chief law enforcement officers and also our zoning enforcement as well. So this is the beginning of trying to address what the state has set up as a deadline for communities to try to put in at least a framework to address it. We have only till December 31st of this year to either put something in place that prohibits it altogether, but of course, the town voted 60 to 40 in favor of it. So both the planning board, the finance committee, and the selectmen all voted to recommend the article as it's written to begin placing the framework and the limitations. And, you know, exclusively saying that just because you set this up does not mean you have to grant any person that comes before you an actual permit. And it also limits, in these districts, the number of permits that could ever be issued for any type of license. Commonwealth has almost 12 different licenses. It's a very complex initiative that they're unfolding at the state level. And we on the local level are just starting to actually put the framework to protect the town and control where anything would occur. Thank you.
That take care of Lincoln? You knew that was gonna happen, didn't ya? Yeah, I thought... Okay, come on.
Do I need a microphone?
Did you need a microphone? Turn around, face the audience.
What's gonna happen if we vote no tonight?
Well, I think if you vote no on this particular bylaw, we'd have to actually come together with another bylaw that would reflect what the townspeople might be indicating by a yes vote versus a no vote. So that is not conditional here, based on what we put before you, but it's certainly, you know, an aspect that could be voted on in the future.
Anyone else have a question or a concern? Wanna voice it? There being none. Here's how I'm gonna do this vote, 'cause it's important, okay? I'm gonna call for a yes vote. When I call for the yes vote, I want everybody who is going to be in favor or wants to vote yes to stand up and hold up your card. Okay? Everybody understand that? Once that is done, you'll all sit down and then I'll call everybody who wants to vote no or nay to do the same thing. Okay, first one is, everyone who wants to vote aye, stand up and hold up your cards. Stand up and hold up your card, please. Everybody sit down. Everybody who wants to vote nay, stand up and hold up your card. One, two, three, four, five, six. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare it is a two-thirds vote. Yes. Come down, who is it?
James Belial, 289 Thayer Street. We didn't vote on the amendment. We just went ahead with the vote. We got a second and nobody voted yea or nay on the amendment.
We had a motion, which was the amendment by John Hadley. He read it.
Right, but we didn't vote on the amendment. We voted on the article itself.
No, we voted on the amendment. He submitted amendment, that was the motion.
Mr. Honore, with all due respect, you didn't make that clear.
The motion carries. Vote has been taken, the vote is aye. So declare it. Okay? I'll be glad to meet with you afterwards and explain it to you. Okay. Now, what all we've been waiting for? At least some of you. Article 3, supplemental funding, dash override. Quiet, please. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a supplemental sum or sums of money deemed necessary to defray expenses of all town departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019. Provided, however, that the amounts appropriated hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval of the voters of a proposition two and a half, so-called override ballot question in accordance with general laws, chapter 59, section 21c, subparagraph G, or take any other action in relation thereto. Reposo. You make the motion?
I move to that the town vote to raise and appropriate a supplemental sum of money in the amount of $1,800,000 deemed necessary to defray expenses for all town departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019. Provided, however, that the amount raised hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon the approval of voters of a proposition two and a half, so-called override ballot question in accordance with general laws, chapter 59, section 21c, subparagraph G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tom Hool, motion was made by Joe Reposo. Discussion, anybody want to have a question or concern? Yes, sir, come on down. Anybody else? Anybody else want? Come on down to the microphone, line up behind him. I think we're gonna have a few questions and concerns. So we might as not waste time coming, waiting to be called on.
Keith Wing, 48 Providence Street. Before things really get heated, 'cause they just might, I just wanna say that I believe the entire town, we have 1,800 people here, should vote on this. So even if you are against this, I still think we should vote yes, because I believe every person in this town has a right on this thing. And just because they're not here tonight doesn't mean that their voice shouldn't be heard. So whether you're for it or against it tonight, please remember that a yes gives everybody a chance to vote. This is big, and however you wanna do this, everyone should have a say. We got 1,800 voters here, we got about 214. Let the 1,800 decide whether you're for it or against it. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Pull that microphone up to your mouth, just show them how to do that, somebody. Alright, just hold it then. Close to your mouth.
Paul Hughes, 15 Allen Court. I just wanna thank the both boards for putting this packed together in presentation. They did an excellent job on telling us how we got in this situation. But I did have some questions on the regional comparison rates. When I did my checking, it doesn't say it here, but Millville is paying 57.7% of its budget to education, which is more than any of our comparison towns here. And it was very clear in all your presentations that we got in this predicament because our education costs far exceeds our 2.5% levy that we can do every year. So to me, even if we vote for this, at some point, if our education costs keep growing at more than 2.5%, we're gonna be back here again at some point in the future. So could you... Has anybody done the math on when that's gonna be? If we pass this, when will we be back again to have to do another override to keep up with the cost of education?
I'm gonna have to find that out to the finance committee if you wanna... Everybody wants to try and... One of you wanna answer? Nobody wants to, it's fine. Somebody else? Administrator.
I hope this might answer your question. You should've also picked up an actual green sheet that was out there that actually looks at the extrapolation of that $1.8 million override. So when you were talking about how do we, you know, fix this structural deficit, it is heavily loaded in the first year because we will be out of balance if we go to town meeting in two weeks to set the budget. If we do appropriate the ask that is certified by the school, we would be in that structural deficit, and it's significant. And so that you see that in the fiscal year for 19 and beyond, we're hoping that we have at least a seven-year trajectory if we work with the school department to bring down and modify that percentage and to try to honor that going forward. But the first year is 2019, and then you extrapolate that out for a good solid, we were hoping, seven to 10 years.
Anybody else, or does that answer your question? Anybody else have a question? Concern? No? Okay. What? Go ahead. Thank you. I didn't... I can't... A lot of times I can't see you if you don't, you know, say something because of these lights.
Paul Dono, 13 Paul Atway. So I'd like to be the opposition to what Keith had said. I think a lot of this information should've been presented well before tonight's vote. I think if we're gonna vote to raise... I've been attending a lot of meetings recently, and I haven't heard any explanation as to why, if these numbers are known, there hasn't been this information prior to asking us to come and vote on raising our taxes. 48%. And if you think that that math is incorrect, go ahead and look at the green sheet that Administrator Callahan just asked you to look at. That's a 48% raise, and the finance committee was silent when they were asked if that solves the problem or not. And the reason they were silent, and I'll say this, and anyone can go ahead and answer, since they won't answer, 'cause it doesn't. It doesn't solve the problem. We're right back here. So if you wanna go ahead and vote to raise your taxes 48%, or if you wanna go ahead and say, "Let's put this on the ballot", when all the information's gonna come later, if that's how you make your decisions, that's fine. I don't make my decisions that way. If I was gonna be asked to vote to raise my own taxes and your taxes 48%, I would like to see the information behind these budgets. And second of all, the budgets don't show any of the breakdown of these costs. For these numbers to be public record at this point means someone sat there and broke down exactly what goes into all of these individual line items. And we don't have that information, but they do. So there's some reason why they have it and we don't, and they're asking to vote us something that we don't have the information to make a well-informed decision on. Thank you.
Come on, folks. Let's keep the applause. Let's listen to what the man has to say or the person has to say. We don't need to shout "yee" or "boo" or clap or anything else. Let's take care of our business, okay? Who else had their hand up over here? Yes, ma'am? Who? Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Donna Tringali, and I live on 12 Avonzo Way in Millville. And my concern is with the explanation of this override. It would seem that $950,000 is due to an increase in the school budget. And when you look at the fiscal 2019 proposed town administrator budget, you would see that the Blackstone Millville budget is $511,000 roughly. So I'm just curious to know where the other $439,000 is going. Because I think that the 950K due to an increase in school budget is misinformation.
Who wants to answer it?
I'm glad you asked that question.
Paul, pull it towards you, please.
I'll answer that question for you exactly. Alright, when it states here that a lot of this has to do with the increase in the school budget, it doesn't just mean for this year. It means that it's been cumulative over the last few years. We funded a deficit with increases from the school over the last at least three years. We've been funding our deficits with reserve money to cover those expenses. It's not just this year, it's from previous years, also cumulative to this year.
So that explains the other $439,000?
And then some.
My other... I have another question. I have heard with the sidewalk improvement and street improvement that's taking place here in town, that the town had to match a grant by $300,000. So is that... Am I understanding that correctly? In order to have that project go through, that the town was responsible for fronting $300,000 to have that road improvement and sidewalk improvement?
Actually, that's not true. I don't know what part of monetary explanation somebody may give you. We do have chapter 90 money that is only explicit for road repairs and construction that we have considered. However, actually, there has just been some recent changes in the law that are hopeful to our little towns, because we did garner a million-dollar grant that did not necessarily require any match. If we were to have a small shortfall, it would distinctly come out of chapter 90, which can only be used for roads and bridges. It cannot be used for anything else. So I'm hoping that we don't have to use any of that because of the change that we've advocated for that just actually went through the senate side and will affect 136 little towns. That we're hoping we can actually access more state money so that we don't even have to touch our meager $100,000 that comes for repairing all our roads and bridges in the course of a year. That's all we get per year. I hope that answered your question.
Okay.
I'm just going to give my opinion. I am of the thought, as was Mr. Wing, that this should be put on the ballot and that everyone in town should step up and have the opportunity to vote on this important decision.
Anyone else? Step up to the mic. Identify yourself and your address.
Kathy Steerman, 28 Boulder Court. I actually had a question for the gentleman who was up before, Mrs. Tringali. If we choose to not even put this on the ballot, where do we go from there? I'm just... I'm curious because...
I don't think you know the state laws, do you? Well, okay.
I guess I...
But you're not our attorney. But you're not our attorney.
I guess I believe if we don't at least give it to the 1,800 voters to vote on...
Excuse me, excuse me. Don't direct your remarks to anyone except me, okay? Okay? And don't anyone answer. Go ahead.
I believe we should give it to the 1,800 people to vote in this town to make the choice. I just think if we don't, this little town is no longer gonna be this little town. Someone else is gonna step in, and we will no longer have control that we think we have right now. You guys don't think it's gonna happen, where do you think the money's gonna come from? We are the only people who are putting money forward. There is barely any business in this town. There are only homeowners. If we can't pay for our town, for our schools, for our police, I don't know who else is going to. I also have the thought that 57% is the education on our line item. It is the biggest business in town. There is no other business. We're in the business of educating our kids. No one's gonna wanna move to this town if we can't educate our kids, if we don't have a police, if our selectmen are no longer our selectmen. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Come on down, Richard. Whoever wants to go behind him, come on down, get behind him. Let's line up now. Richard.
Richard Hurtos, 70 Quakers Street. Have two questions. One question is, when the time comes to vote for this article, will it be with these yellow cards standing up waving it?
As it stands right now, it will be, yes. As that stands right now, it will be, yes.
Can I make a motion that it be a secret ballot?
Second.
I'll take your motion once the discussion is over with, okay?
Okay.
Mark Derry, 8 Dominic Street. Quick question. Available revenues or anticipated revenues? I know in the past years we'd have difficulties collecting taxes, so that's always had a bearing. Where are we right now as far as, I don't know, a percentage of people that are behind in the taxes, not paying their taxes, defaulting their taxes? As a town looking into, and I know the administrator, you know, that was one of the main reasons and stuff like that. Obviously, the grants too. Good job, Jennifer.
I'll get you an answer. All right. You want to answer that one? Tell them.
Sure. I think I could hear all of it. He was asking where are we with tax collections overall and initiatives-backed taxes? Yes, I appreciate that question. We do have our treasurer-collector who is sitting down here in the front row, Lisa LaRue. I only bring attention to her because many of you who do pay your taxes and go and do that on time will see this lady who actively and willingly takes tax money every year. We began a very stern initiative last July. We called it both a tax title and a real estate demand initiative. That yielded us, and it was unprecedented in this town, in the order of July 1st to the current third quarter, more than $180,000. Again, when you look at the structural deficit that we're going into the next year, it will continue to help try to patch that, but the deficit is so large that it only puts a dent in it. That $180,000 actually went back a little bit further to almost $250,000 when we started to be aggressive with tax title-taking last, not this past January, but the previous January of 2017. So that was a significant amount of money. I will tell you that anybody who was on a payment plan, as of July 1st, the treasurer-collector had come to me and we had talked about removing anybody who was on a payment plan. That initiative started on July 1st with an initial 50% real estate demand payment, no matter how much someone owed, and it concluded on December 31st. And that was also part of that $180,000 to bring everybody up to date with no payment plans. It was a significant one-time infusion into our system with hopefully now keeping current. Recently, we also had started embarking on doing a quarterly aggressive outreach program. As of right now, and we're in the third billing cycle and the fourth one is about to come out, we had almost 72.5% collected taxes, which would make sense if you talk about 75% being three-quarters of your year. So that's where we're at. I consider that to be very aggressive. We are working with our tax title company as well to look at potentially auctioning off land in the future, but that in and of itself has a lot of steps to go through. So I will give a lot of credit to our treasurer-collector's office for really stepping up. And one more thing, we will start on July 1st, and this is something that our treasurer-collector has brought to my attention, that we will do a vigorous outreach, both through letter and telephone calling, for anyone who gets behind even one quarter. We're doing that in a whole series of different aspects with our town hall, and this is one area for tax collection that we're doing that. And I thank you for the question. It was a really good question to ask of us.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? Sir, you had your hand up. Come up behind her.
Erin Vinaco, Albert Drive. I just want to comment on the gentleman that mentioned if they wanted to be here tonight, they could have voted on it. I would just like to clarify for everyone that we just voted on Article 2 to pass a bylaw for our town allowing, putting a new bylaw into place. So I would have to assume as a towns member that at some point this bylaw was passed that if there is a need for an override, you have to pass it in a town meeting to get it to a paper ballot for everyone to be able to vote. We are voting tonight to put that out to our townspeople. We are not voting to pass a tax increase this evening. We are voting to put it on a paper ballot, which again, I have to believe was, the bylaw was put into place years ago for the same reason we just voted on another one as townspeople, to give our townspeople a voice. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that, that we're not passing a 48% tax increase this evening. We are giving all of the registered voters in town a chance to come out and mark the ballot. Thank you.
There you go. Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Jim Parento, 18 Arode. I just want to say that needless to say, being the devil's advocate over here, what is the worst-case scenario? What does happen if the state comes in? What if I say, "No, I don't want to pay these taxes. It's way too much money. I can't afford it. I don't use the school system. I send my kids to private schools, so this doesn't affect me." And I understand everybody's disposition who does use the school, and I don't want to seem like hostile towards this, but I'll get a $5,000 increase on my, on my house. That's absurd. I've never seen anything like this before in my life. And what does it do to our property values? Who else is going to even want to come here with this scenario? I'm very curious.
So do you have a specific question you want answered?
Yeah. What is, what is going to happen if the state takes over? What will they do? What is that process? And why is it so horrible? I've never been through it. I don't know.
I don't even either, and I don't know either.
Everybody seems to be really scared, but I'd rather keep my money and let them come in and clean it up.
Yeah. Folks? Uh-uh. Anybody want to address that?
All right. So up in the back, I had actually...
Quiet, quiet, please.
I'm very sorry. How's that? I'm sorry. So in the back room, I had actually put forward a sheet, actually was, I think, a stapling of five pages. And that is something that shows models of state oversight, state intervention. As a town administrator and as a former state official, I can unequivocally tell you that I'm not going to sit up here and tell you that I think you should go into any kind of state oversight. And the word receivership is used very broadly. I know that the Department of Revenue has different ways of looking at every single community. Some people may have used towns like Medway or places like Chelsea. This community was one of the few communities back in the 1930s that did go through a receivership back then during the height of the Depression era, and it maintained it for about 11 years. The town is only 100 years young, and it has had a tumultuous history. It has also looked at doing overrides in the past in only hand-selected or ballot-selected areas where they wanted to increase the tax rate. But the state itself will look at the community and has looked at the community through the actual invitation of the Board of Selectmen in 2016, before I came. And I've only been at the job coming up on two years of this year, and one through not having an entire building to operate out of. So the one thing that I will tell you is looking at the financial part of it, there are different levels. If some of you look at what you have picked up there, you will see different aspects from overseer to looking at financial implications. Some communities get into problematic areas because they've taken a bad credit risk. Some have actually gone and had people embezzle money. Some people have actually had corruption. We don't have any of that. Our biggest problem is we have a revenue shortfall, and the revenue shortfall has been building successively for almost 15 years. And the community does not have the ability to continue above and beyond the 2.5% that these different aspects of financing that the town is obligated to fund. And if we cannot meet those obligations, the state will not just come in and evaluate and set a tax rate. Some places they do do that. But other times they come in and they will also explain to you that when a state does come in, it does impact. You can look over the border and places like Wind Socket and other places that have had state intervention at different levels. It does affect people's home valuations. It does affect what happens at the local level. It does affect your ability to borrow. It does affect all of those things. The state is not looking and desiring to take over Millville. It has serious implications. The state wants local communities to be able to handle their issues and their finances. That's why this town got incorporated 100 years ago. We just celebrated in 2016 the 100th anniversary. So to answer your question, there's no one size that fits all. This is a unique situation where we're a small town with very limited growth, but yet also have had increased asks of the small budget that we have. And we have to find out what's the right size of the budget with the appropriate tax rate. That's what this is all about. Tonight is an opportunity, I think, to ask these kinds of questions is, would you want to have the state come in? You've got to be careful what you wish for, folks. This isn't a panacea. The state does not want to come in, and the state will have a different idea perhaps than what you were thinking to address this problem. And that also is not just conditional that they just wipe out the town administrator and they wipe out all the... That's, that's people just talking. That's not the way it works. And they'll look very discreetly, yes, at our finances, but they already have. They've seen our finances. They know we have a revenue shortfall. We've actually shared this information with them. This is no secret to them. So in a, I know I've gone on, Mr. Moderator, but I did because that, that document I provided with people, because people were asking, it's unusual. People don't get up and clap to want a receiver to come in. I'm sorry, but it's, it shows a failure of the community and not being able to address what every other community has to address, and that is rightsizing your budget and resetting your tax rate. I hope I answered some of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Paul, you wanted to say something? Then I'll go to you. You two gentlemen, whoever wants, come down, line up.
Contrary to the belief of many people in this audience, the, and many people in the town, there's a misconception that we got here because the Finance Committee hasn't been doing their job. I'm going to be very brief about this. That I don't believe to be the case, and I think a lot of people don't believe that to be the case also. The state coming in, if they determine that we've actually been doing our job properly and we do legitimately have a revenue shortfall, they have the authority to raise the taxes arbitrarily up to this levy ceiling number of $7.3 million that you see on this green sheet. So we've spent a lot of time going through these budgets. We've spent a lot of time with the departments. We know them inside and out. The state's not going to do that. They're not going to spend the time to find out what, what the right decision for things are, what, you know, whether we need a library, whether we need a senior senator, whether we need whatever. They're going to come in and say, "Yeah, you know what? You don't have enough money. We're going to raise some taxes. We'll see you later." That's how that's going to go. So do you want the people that have really been active and really been looking at these budgets line by line, helping you make your decisions? Or do you want somebody that's not even going to ask your opinion? And not even going to ask you to make the decision, coming in and making the decision for you?
Okay. Ms. Bowen.
Ellen, Ellen Bowen, 98 Providence Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. And I...
Pull it down a little bit more.
I just want to say, yes, you have been doing your job, and we look, look to you for recommendations, which you have done for the past years, and now we're in this mess. I mean, I, that's hard for me to, to understand. However, I, Mr. Moderator, I do not agree with this article, and I'll tell you why. The impact of an override will be felt for years to come. It's not just next year, the year after. It's forever. Okay? It will permanently increase the levy limit, and we will see large tax increases yearly. That is a given. Senior citizens in Millville, in this town, are on limited income, and their homes that they have worked for, for years, will be lost. And that was told to us at one of the forums. If you cannot pay your taxes, we will put a lien on your house, and that'll be the end of that. So you'll have nothing, nothing to leave your children, your children's children, whatever. It's over. So therefore, Mr. Moderator, I would say an override is out of the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Next person, please. Uh-uh, uh-uh. I know you, a lot of you agree with it. That's fine.
Hello, my name's Christina McRoberts.
Speak up just a little bit, please.
My name's Christina McRoberts. I live at 15 Albert Drive, and I just wanted to ask Mr. Moderator a question.
Yes.
Has, has the town council and the finance board considered or considered merging potentially with other towns to, or regionalizing resources? I know we want to maintain our independence. I'm just questioning just an alternative possible solution.
Madam Town Administrator, have we considered regionalizing?
Regionalizing as in towns regionalizing or regionalizing all kinds of services?
Whatever option would be feasible.
No. At this point in time, I think the decision really rests with the townspeople. We're not there yet at all in even conceptualizing of that. I will say the town's done an excellent job because of the size of it for going into regional agreements. We just inked another one for an animal shelter regional agreement, which for some people might look, you know, in the future on May 14th, when we look at a budget and we see we have an animal control officer who does a great job. If we had to actually create a shelter, which we're not having to do, we would have more, tens of thousands of dollars to do that. So we've done that in partnership with the town of Blackstone. We have a regional communications agreement that we just saved over $50,000 per year going into this budget cycle for renegotiations. We have a lot of those kinds of things, but as far as regionalizing us as a community, no. We have not gotten there at all.
Thank you very much.
Name is Paul Canali, 28 Alfonso Way. I'd like to, first, Jennifer, you've done a great job and you've done a lot of hard work, and I've noticed that, and thank you for all the hard work you've done. My question, Mr. Olet, you had mentioned, or somebody over here had mentioned about the shortfall, like $900, I think it was Mrs. Tringali about the shortfall on the money for the education, was $400,000, if that sounds right? And you explained very clearly to me why it is there. But that money came from reserves. We're trying to make up for that. Is that money planning on going back to the reserves and going forward to build our reserves? Or is that going to be to keep the budget of the school budget going and nothing going back?
In this year's budget that we're in deliberations on right now and making our recommendations and making our decisions on, there is a line in there for starting to add back into those reserve monies.
And that is out of the $400,000 shortfall, like the addition that didn't show up?
It would be done directly within the budget, where in the past it's been done at a, at a meeting, at a town meeting, to place money into that. That's actually going to become a line item so that going forward, we're going to be building up those reserves that have been depleted for many years.
Hey, my other, my only other question to you is, you had mentioned if the state does come in with receivership, you had said that they're just going to come in and they can let, do it to the maximum levy, which is $7.7 million, whatever it is, they're not going to do anything else. So you're saying they won't? I mean, I think part of my big concern is, is the school budget, which I think is a concern. They're not even going to look at that if that's the, if that's part of the problem?
Of course they will. They're going to look at everything. And, and I guess it was misconstrued when I said they will do that. They could do that. The, the thing about the DOR is they don't make any commitments. They don't say, "Yeah, we're going to come in and do this." They say, "We're going to come in, we're going to look at what you've got going on here, and then we're going to make our decisions accordingly." So they will. They're going to look at every budget line item. They're going to look at every contract. They're going to look at every relationship we have from a regional standpoint. They're going to pretty much look at everything, top-down, related to our budget, 100%. And then they're going to make their decisions and recommendations accordingly, if it comes to that. I, I personally don't like the idea of the state governing where my money's going to go.
Okay. I want to interrupt here a moment and to clarify something. None of us sat, standing on this, or sitting on this stage, or sitting in this audience can tell us what the state is going to do or not going to do. We can't answer that question. We're not the state. We can stand here and assume what they might do based upon conversations we've had with some other else, but that doesn't mean that's what they're going to do or not going to do. So I think it's kind of inappropriate to say, "Well, what is the state, what actions are the state going to take when they come in?" We don't know.
Mr. Moderator?
Just a moment. You're next.
Chris McNamara, 36 Dominic Street. The question came in, what would happen if our taxes increased by this number? You can be sure your property values will all drop. We have a case study in one socket. I have multiple properties in one socket. You people have a certain amount of money they can spend on a monthly housing allowance. You can call it taxes. You can call it mortgage. You can call it whatever you want, but it's part of the total amount they can afford. If they can't afford it, price has to come down. It's pretty simple, right? It's pretty simple. As far as dumping more money into this problem, and it's a problem, it's absurd that I think we're going to throw money in, trust ourselves, and it's everyone, ourselves, that we won't overspend anymore and we'll be okay. Doesn't work. The whole thing is lower the water, let's see the rocks, let's get rid of the rocks. That's what we have to do. Let's break the walls down between this town and the school and go in and re-engineer the whole organization to a price that we can afford. Right now, we have walls, and we're not doing it. That's what we need to do.
Thank you. Next.
Kyle Olson, 20 Alfonso Way. I just had a question that had come up years ago about the tax base of how do we do it in this town? In other words, I own a house that's 3,000 square feet. If a house built 25 years or 30 years ago was... Or 100 years ago, are we in the same tax lines? In other words, are all the properties being based on the same rate for the same square footage they are? Because, you know, in other words, if somebody's lived here for 75 years, I get that the families had the land for 75 years, but we came along and built under a certain tax premise, and either it was us that threw it all off, because that seems 15 years ago is when you're saying that's when we moved in. We thought we were... You know, us moving in would help the tax base. Did it? Or did it not help because we didn't go back and say, if these people have 3,000 square feet and they're paying $550 a month, what about the rest of the people who are paying 200 for that same size house? I mean, did that equal out? I'm asking the question. I don't know if it did or didn't.
I'm going to try to answer this as best I can based on what your question is. The town has a maximum amount that they can levy, and when we talk about Proposition Two and a Half, what that means is 2.5% gets added to the total gross levy, the total amount that the town can collect in taxes. Where your property values fall in is where the distribution of how much of that you pay. If your property value goes up within the year where the tax rate has been set, so the tax rate gets set in the fall, if your house is revaluated or revalued within... Between the times that the tax rate is set, it doesn't add to the total levy. What it does is it changes your distribution within the town. So, right now, we have a situation where we're in the process of reevaluating all of the properties in town. It hasn't been done in a while where it was the full revaluation. Once that full revaluation is done, people are going to be paying taxes in a more equitable manner, and I think that's kind of what you're saying. So, a house that's 3,000 square feet is going to be taxed the same as the next door neighbor's house that's 3,000 square feet. If your neighbor has twice the house, they pay twice the tax. That's just the way it should be. That's the way it should be if all of the values are concurrent with all the other values.
But they're not now, right?
So, in that regard, right now, that is in process of being done, but no, it's not right now.
So, will that help, this deficit?
No, it won't, because it doesn't add to... The only thing that adds to the levy is what's called new growth. So, if your house gets reevaluated, but you haven't done anything to it, it's just changing the distribution of how much of that total levy you're paying. If you put an addition on, then that gets added to the total town.
Then how does my tax go up if I get reevaluated?
Because it gets redistributed within the...
But where does the money go?
It all goes to the... If yours went up, somebody else's went down, is basically what it boils down to.
Your tax... Your tax basically... Your tax... You pay taxes based on what your house is worth. That's it.
Paul Hughes, 15 Allen Court. I just want to thank you for all the board's work again and your explanation of if the DOR comes in, is that they're going to go through everything, and I think you should feel comfortable that the town's spending is very reasonable for what we get. But what you said just now, which gave me encouragement, is if they do come in, they also look at the school. And the school, we can say that I believe the state is a part of the problem. Every time it comes for the budget, the... Somebody from the school committee comes up and says, state didn't fully fund transportation. State didn't fully fund special ed. You know, the benefit costs are out of control, you know, and we have no control over all this. So, you know, I think it may be a positive thing, because those are all things that you have no control over, and it's by far the biggest part of the budget, that maybe the state will look in the mirror and see that they're part of the problem.
Hold on one moment, because I had told somebody they could speak.
Basically, in terms...
Pull it right up to your mouth.
Basically, in terms of value, it's an assesses question for the assessing department. However, the rates are based on the value of home sales and the value of your home on the market, and that's how the... All the individual types of housing and that kind of thing, that's the basis for it.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mark Derry, 8 Dominic. I'm just curious. What has the increases been over the last nine years? We moved into the town nine years ago. Came out 4,800, I think the taxes were, and now we're almost seven. So, just in the last nine years, my taxes have gone up about 50%. So, and I sure as hell know my property value hasn't gone up, not that much. So, and I understand the town's got problems. I don't have a solution. I really don't. And, you know, I appreciate everybody's hard work. I wouldn't want to be in your position. I really wouldn't. Can somebody answer that?
Well, what I was going to say is that I too am relatively new to the town, and when I first moved in, I started to look at the town annual town reports, and I ran across annually a fund balance. In a period of 10 years, the fund balance, and I talked about this at last year's annual town meeting, is that in a period of 10 years, we used one-time revenues to fund the balance. The fund balance eroded over that 10-year appearance... Over that 10-year period by $1,820,000. These are expenditures over what we're allowed or receive in our levy. And at this point, we've exhausted all of that funding. So, it isn't a coincidence that we raped a bank account by $1.8 million, and we're ending up... If we make a projection on a budget now, we're in a dire situation where we'd probably end up with the lack of the use of... By using one-time revenue, that we'd be over $400,000 in deficit if we had put a deficit together right now, a budget together right now. Otherwise, we'd, you know, we'd have to sacrifice in a number of areas, including, you know, supplemental funding, rubbish collection, and those... So, we're in desperate need to right-size our budget. And the other thing is, if the Commonwealth came in, they have the ability to dissolve a town, and we don't want to see that to hap... We don't want to see that happen.
Anyone else have a question? Yes, ma'am. Come down.
Rachel Marzolo, 44 Chestnut Hill Road. Town Administrator, I would like to give you the opportunity to possibly take back that you called your townspeople failures for clapping at receivership, which as a town, I don't think we're all here because we're failures. We're wondering what happened. Secondly, the only way that the town creates growth is by business and more people moving in, and how is that going to happen if they're going to be looking at a tax rate that is that of Sherburne or Wellesley and receiving nothing for it? We already have such minimal services. Why are we going to then pay double what I already know is a lot for my house, but receive nothing for it? So...
I want to answer your first question. I don't know who you're talking about said, I called the people failures.
She called us failures as a town for clapping for somebody who is looking for receivership. Town Administrator, is that...
I don't... I think you're incorrect.
You can re-watch the video because it's resonated.
Excuse me. I'll tell you right now that I did not hear anyone clap and say, or call the people failures for clapping for somebody. I corrected people for clapping for people.
You absolutely did. You absolutely did, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you you're wrong or that I'm wrong. If you would like, when this is over, please re-watch the video.
I will.
She called us failures for clapping for receivership.
I think she probably... I think... I don't think so, but I will look at the...
Please do.
I will cover the video.
Please do.
Leave me your name and number. I will look at the video.
Absolutely.
And I will contact you, okay?
Yes.
If that is what happened. But I don't think... I think she said something to the fact that we are failures for not doing something, not for people bringing up the issue and clapping for the speaker. No, I don't think we did that.
I...
At least I hope we didn't.
I will let you re-watch the video.
You heard my remarks at the beginning of the meeting. I'm not going to lie. You know it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Excuse me.
So, the question is, how are we going to promote new growth, then?
I don't know.
I mean, you're increasing taxes to promote new growth, or not to promote new growth, just you're increasing taxes to make up the deficit. Once the deficit is fixed, are we going to have new growth? Is there going to be new homes? Are there going to be people who want to move into the town?
I don't think anybody here can answer that question, to be honest with you. To be very honest with you, I don't think anybody here can answer what the growth is going to be for the next few years. Okay?
Right. Well, that's what...
Excuse me.
Based off of the information given, we haven't had any growth, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Is that over the years, there has not been any growth.
I've been here for over 30 years, and it hasn't been that much growth.
Right. So...
Okay. I hear you. Mr. Barber.
Lincoln Barber, 226 Thayer Street. I have a couple of things to say. The first is that if you read the town administrator's handout on the different options with the state, you will read in there that no matter what the option is, the town of Millville has the privilege of paying for the people that come in here to straighten us out. Presently, we have a volunteer board. I'm a department head in town. I know that these people have worked hundreds of hours to sit up there tonight and try and guide this meeting. I spent almost two hours with the Finance Committee discussing my budget. If you wanted to get educated on the budget, you had the opportunity all year long. If you brought this much passion that's here tonight on even a monthly basis to a board of selectmen's meeting or a Finance Committee meeting, you would have all your answers, and this town would be in a lot better situation than it is. But when you only come a couple of times and want to complain and ask questions that have already been answered over the last few months, it's not a very good working relationship. So, I would much rather be in the Millville school bus in the driver's seat than in the backseat with the state driving. That's what I have to say.
Okay. I had a motion to call a question, and there was a second, I think. Who made the motion?
Catherine Olet.
Who... Name?
Catherine Olet.
Catherine Olet? Yeah, that Mrs. Lockwood. Who's seconded? I think it was Miss Lima, right? Miss Lima? Gagalima seconded it? I hope everybody had a chance to get your questions answered or your concerns expressed or your opinions voiced, okay? Let's hold it down. What I'm going to do is do just exactly like I did with the marijuana vote. I'm going to call for a yes vote.
There was a motion. We made a motion. It'll be a secret ballot. We received a second.
Okay. We'll do a secret ballot then. Madam Town Clerk, are you ready? All right, let's vote to move the question. I am corrected. Thank you, Miss Lima.
Mr. Moderator.
Just a moment. Want to vote to move the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. It is a question. Yes, somebody hand their hand up for something.
2846 S Street. What I want you to do to explain the... We just voted at about seven minutes of nine.
Yep.
We have nothing else to discuss tonight. What about the reconsider?
We have spoken here for an hour, and we all go home, and 10 people sit here and reconsider the vote.
Within one hour after the vote is taken?
We have a four-minute debate as well.
Huh?
The town is on the board. The town is on the board.
We'll dissolve the town warrant after the meeting is adjourned, okay? Or after the vote is taken. All right. Madam Town Clerk, are we ready for the vote?
Yes, I would like my registrars to come down.
Okay, will all the registrars come down, please?
She was mentioned.
Yes.
Don't we have to vote on the secret ballot?
We're going to vote by secret ballot.
We haven't voted by secret ballot.
We passed it. We just voted on it. Yeah.
Mr. Moderator, you voted to move the question, not to whether or not we go by secret ballot, which was my point the last time with the marijuana vote.
Okay, no, marijuana is a different question.
Mr. Moderator, please, excuse me.
Please, sir.
I have the floor. I have the floor. Thank you very much.
I'm going to give you one warning.
All right.
All right. Do we have seven people that want a secret ballot? Please stand up. We do. So, it's a secret ballot. We just voted on a secret ballot. Everybody...
Okay.
For them people who want to vote, that's all we need.
What about the marijuana question, then? Are we going to go back to back?
I'm going to tell you again. No, please stay here. I'm going to explain to you for this gentleman's lack of ability to understand something. We made a... We voted... Excuse me a minute, please.
No. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I am... I'm sorry, but I'm tired of taking this criticism for things that it is, all right? We voted on the marijuana. It was a motion to amend a previous article that was voted on at the last meeting. That's what the article was, to amend a vote that had already been taken at a previous town meeting and to replace it with this article and this bylaw. That's what we did. We did not amend the article in the warrant.
So, then we didn't vote on the article then either?
All right, I have explained it.
Okay.
Madam Town Clerk, are we ready for a secret ballot, please? All right, what you will be doing? Do we have the thing for voting yes and no?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I'm waiting. All right, they're going to come down. Your valuable attention, please. The Town Clerk is going to explain how the voting is going to go, and I'd like it row by row, please, starting at the rear.
So this is how it's going to work. We're going to start in the back rows. Everybody received a yellow straight ticket with a number on it, and it says Article 1, 2, and 3. This is Article 3. Over here and over here, we're going to use both of these aisles. So what you're going to do is come down to the registrars. They will hand you a ballot, and on it is a yes and a no. Pretty simple. So you take the ballot and you tear it in half. If you're voting yes, you put it over here or over there. Nobody's going to know how you voted. Then you take the other piece, let's say you voted yes, you take the no, you crumple it up, and you put it right here in this bag. This is the trash. Don't put your vote in this bag. This is the trash, okay? Your vote in the pink baskets. Your trash in here. Nobody will know how you voted. Is everybody happy with this? Yes.
My question is, a yes vote will bring this to a ballot question.
At a special town election. This does not make you vote yes or no for the override. This says that we want everybody that's a voter in town to have the ability to vote for this override. A no says that you're not interested in having a special election.
Let me, let me say something. Let me say something, please. I want to apologize to the gentleman. My choice of words was very poor, and that shouldn't have happened, okay? I apologize for those, those use of words. But I would love to have the opportunity to get with you after this meeting and explain to you why the vote is valid. I don't know if I'm going to convince you or not, but I like to explain it, okay? But I apologize to you and to all these people for my lack of good judgment or use of words, okay? I'm sorry. Let's start with the back row, then. Everybody who wants to vote yes, come down. Oh, no. Whoa, 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 whoa. You know, I was, I was hoping I could maintain control tonight, but I've lost it. Listen up, listen up. Hold on, hold on. Oh, stop, stop, please. Stop.
Okay, so the, the other thing that I want to mention is that I'm going to have a person here and a person there putting a red checkmark on Article 3 to show that yes, you did vote, okay? It's going to be on your yellow sheet, on your yellow sheet where it says Article 3, okay?
You want to monitor? Diane, you have some monitoring this? All right. Everybody ready, let's go. Either write down yes or no. Excuse me. The secret ballot voting is now over. We will now count the votes. Everybody in the back of the room, please come forward, clear that area so that we won't have anybody by there except the people who are counting votes. So please remove in the back. Chief. Chief Landry, can you clear that area out by there so they can count the votes in private, please? Thank you. Everybody give me your attention, please. Our Animal Control Officer has an announcement he would like to make.
Hi, y'all. Kevin Sullivan, Millville Animal Control. Just wanted to remind everyone that May 19th from 9 to 3 over at the Blackstone, sorry, Millville Police Station, we're having our upcoming rabies clinic, fifteen dollar rabies shots. And also, don't forget to license your dogs.
What are you gonna do?
May I have your attention, please? The results of Article Three are here. Those who voted yes, eighty-eight. Those who voted no, one-twenty-one.
Miss Moderator, Miss Moderator, I moved to dissolve the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made to, and seconded to dissolve the warrant. Called for vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Town meeting is adjourned.